My name is Wyatt Shields, I'm the city manager. And welcome, glad you're, everyone came out tonight. Let me ask Vice Mayor Snyder if he would say a few welcoming remarks and make a few introductions, and then I'll introduce my colleague Chuck Murray, and ask him to introduce himself as well.
Thank you very much. Do I need the mic, or are we good without it? It's up to you. Do people need the mic or phones?
Mike, I think we'll use the last presentation as our streaming video and not take this one tonight, given the fact that it's going to be more informal.
Okay, thanks. Well, I'd like to obviously invite everybody who's here. I want to recognize a couple of our city council members that are here. I have Ira Kalin and Phil Duncan. Phil's back there. And I want to recognize Karen Oliver, who's running for city council. Marcus Simon is running to be our state representative. And I have Tom Clinton. And virtually everyone else here is part of our legal team, and citizens, and everyone's really welcome. This is one of the most important issues that we're dealing with right now. We've had a number of town hall meetings, both city-sponsored and sponsored by other organizations. We have frequently asked questions available on the city's website. And it's really an exciting time with some great prospects in the future. So I'll turn it back over to Wyatt Shields, our city manager, and Chuck Murray, a citizen of Falls Church no less, and the manager of Fairfax Water Authority. So, welcome everyone.
Before I get started, let me ask Chuck Murray, stand up and introduce himself.
Thanks Wyatt. My name's Charles Lynn Murray, or they'll call me Chuck. I'm the general manager of Fairfax Water. I've been the general manager of Fairfax Water for almost 10 years. Prior to that, I was chief of operations at Washington Supermunicipal, which is across the river, serving the government of Prince George County. I was very happy to come across the river, to take the opportunity to work for Fairfax Water. And in doing so, I had a nice home right here in the city of Falls Church. I've been very happily ensconced there since 2004. I'm a native Washingtonian. Been here pretty much all my life, and just happy to be here tonight and give you an opportunity to learn a little bit more about Fairfax Water as we go through the year. So, thanks for having me. And I'm going to sit on the comfy couch over here.
I will also add that Chuck Murray has served the city as a citizen. He was a former chairman of our retirement board that oversees our pension investments, and brought his knowledge and experience to that job, and has been a great person to work with as we've gone through planning for a transition to Fairfax Water, should the voters vote in favor of the referendum, in favor of the sale, when they vote on November 5th. So tonight's town hall meeting is one of five public meetings that's being held over the month of September and October, to get information out to the public about the referendum, about the agreement that has been struck between Fairfax County, Fairfax Water, and the city of Falls Church for the sale of our water utility to Fairfax Water. And that agreement is contingent upon the voters in Falls Church only, voting in favor of that sale. And so, we can walk through the terms of the agreement, and answer questions about that, and provide an introduction to Fairfax Water. That's what we'd like to do. But given the small attendance, let me just look to the folks who I know have not been to one of these yet before, and it's really just a small group here, just to make sure that we're, we want to use your time effectively, and not sort of launch off on a big presentation that you're not interested in, and have this tailored more specifically to what you're in, why you're here tonight, and what questions that you have. So, before I launch off, would it be helpful if we go through real quickly a number of slides, that just lay out the basic terms, and then-
Let's get the basic facts.
Get the basic facts out there, and then you can take your questions, and also allow Chuck Murray to provide a quick overview of Fairfax Water as well. And make sure this is ready to go. Okay. So first, just a little bit about the Falls Church Water system, what it is, that we would be selling to Fairfax Water. It's the 13th largest water utility in Virginia. We have 34,000 accounts, and we serve a population much larger than the city of Falls Church. About 10% of these customers are in Fairfax City. 90% of these customers, the population that we serve, is in Fairfax County. It's an operation that's run out of an enterprise fund. It's about a $21 million a year operation, revenues and expenditures. And that's independent of the general fund, so your property taxes and your water fees are not intermingled. We have 54 water utility employees who will transition and become Fairfax Water employees in the event of the sale, and we get a order from Washington Aqueduct. And so here's a map of our service territory. This is the city of Falls Church here. So our service territory is from the Potomac River, south through McLean, all the way down to Route 50. And on that western boundary, we serve a portion of Tyson's Corner, and we go up against the town of Virginia, Brianna. And on the east side, our boundary is Arlington County. So the referendum question that the voters will have on November 5th stems from the city charter, which states that the water utility cannot be sold unless the voters approve that sale. And here's the question that will be on the ballot. Shall the city of Falls Church sell its water system to the Fairfax County Water Authority for consideration, including a payment to the city of $40 million, and a boundary adjustment that will bring within the city's boundaries the George Mason High School, Mary Ellen Henderson Middle School properties, certain city-owned properties on Gordon Road and Shreve Road, and certain other properties. So that's the question that will show up on your ballot, and will be the last question on your ballot, so don't forget about it. So let me talk about the terms more broadly. It's a three-way agreement, as I noted. We did arrive at this agreement through mediation. We had federal magistrate judge Teresa Buchanan, who brought the parties together under mediation, and we arrived at a term sheet, and the city council, the board of supervisors, and Fairfax Water Board have all approved the terms of that agreement. Now it's up to the voters of Falls Church to approve it as well. Our legal team is here for the city of Falls Church. They're instrumental in drawing up these terms, and in working with Fairfax Water and the county to arrive at satisfactory resolution of a whole host of terms beyond sort of the broad outline that I'll lay down here tonight. So in terms of the purchase price, the purchase price is $40 million. That price was arrived at through an independent valuation study that was conducted by the city of Falls Church in 2012 by the firm of SAIC. And they came up with a range of value based on standard utility evaluating methods. And so this, the prices in that band that our independent valuator established. Now, the city does have liabilities in the water fund, and we will retain those liabilities. And those include debt, and those include fully funding our pension, those include handling some of the transaction costs. All told, those are approximately $30 million. $30 million is the high figure, it's going to be less than that once it's all sorted out. But that would leave $10 million net proceeds to the city from the purchase price. Undesignated cash, after all of our bills are paid, would remain with the city, but that's capped at $3 million. So we'll retain funds to sort of finish out all of our accounting, pay off all of our vendors, et cetera, and any cash left over, the city can keep up to a cap of $3 million. A very important provision in the agreement is uniform water rates. So what that means is that the city, in the future, will never be charged a rate that's different than all the other customers. And also, our customers over traditional service territory, including McLean, part of Tyson, Mary Ellen, they will never be charged a different rate than the rest of Fairfax Water. And Fairfax Water has two years to comply with this uniform rate provision. So they will go through their rate-making process, Chuck can speak to this, but their intention is to get the rates uniform as quickly as possible. That will not happen on the date of when the transaction is executed, but within two years after that, we will have uniform rates. Fairfax Water currently charges a rate that's about 30% lower than the city of Falls Church. So it's reasonable to anticipate that over, as the rates become uniform, your water rates are going to be reduced significantly. Our utility employees will transition to Fairfax Water, so on the date that we close on the sale, all of our 54 water utility employees will become Fairfax Water employees, and they're guaranteed position accountable, will pay in benefits for a period of at least three years. And we have a boundary adjustment, a total of about 38.4 acres. Part of it is school property, and part of it is the city's property yard properties, where we conduct our public works, operations. Of the school properties, that's 36 acres, and 70% of that must be used for educational related purposes for 50 years after the date of sale. 30% of the property can be used for any purposes. And so it's envisioned that a portion of our school site will be able to be used possibly for economic development and growing the city's tax base. So, from a map perspective, this is the George Mason High School, this is Mary Ellen Henderson and the playing fields. So the boundary adjustment will bring the school campus into the city, and so we will go through a land use planning process with the school board, and the city council, and the planning commission, and the community, determine the best configuration of the school to meet our educational needs on the site, and also determine what part of that property could also be used for economic development that would help pay for, among other things, reconstruction of high school. On the Gordon Road side of the city, this is Broad Street up there, Shreve Road coming down this way. This is where our property yard is currently located. The city owns all this property, and that property will be brought into the city. The city currently conducts its water operations out of this warehouse, and that land will obviously remain in the city, it's not affected by a boundary adjustment. But we do have in the agreement a provision that provides Fairfax Water an option to lease this property, so they can continue operations and serving customers out of this site for a period not to exceed 10 years. After that 10-year period, again, the city would be able to retain ownership of this property and develop it for economic development purposes. This land also can be reconfigured in the future to be as efficient as possible in land use. So the assets that would convey, obviously everything that you need to run a water system is what is in the agreement will convey to Fairfax Water. So that's our water towers, pump stations, mains, all of our utility land, easements, vehicles, the balance of availability fees, and this is an important provision. Over time, developers pay connection fees, and they are significant. When developers pay those fees, they're really for one purpose, and that is to provide for the future expansion of the system. Their developer contribution for the future expansion of the system, we currently have a balance of about $26 million of accumulated developer fees. Those will convey to Fairfax Water as part of this agreement. And also, in the agreement it states that they would be used strictly for expansion as well, so that will benefit our customers in maintaining lower rates in the future as those funds are used for that purpose. On the sewer side, the city will retain a sanitary sewer system, and we will conduct our billing through Fairfax Water. So this is very similar to what we do right now for Fairfax County. They operate sewer in McLean. As the water provider there, we build a sewer, collect the money, and then remit it to Fairfax County after we've collected it. Now Fairfax Water will do the same for the city on the sewer side. But we will retain a crew to maintain our sanitary sewer system, and those will be the same people who will also work on our stormwater system under the newly created stormwater utility that the city council created last spring. Fairfax Water will provide retail water services, this is my last slide, but if approved by voters, the closing date that we've targeted, this is our planning date, date may change, but what we're all working towards is a closing date on January 3rd. On January 3rd, our employees will become Fairfax Water employees. All of our customers will be billed by Fairfax Water after that point. We'll have a lot of communication going out after the referendum, if the referendum is approved, to get our customers well informed about this transition and what they should expect. So that's a quick overview. And let me ask Chuck Murray if he would say a few words about Fairfax Water, we can key up your slides as well. Let me know how you would like to handle it.
Well, I'll probably breeze through this pretty quickly, I won't do that, just don't forget to touch on something. So, I introduced myself. I didn't get a chance to introduce Jeannie Bailey back there, raise your hand. Jeannie Bailey is our public information officer for Fair. Jeannie is also a very smart water person. She's been in the water business all her life, worked in the laboratory when she first came to Fairfax Water. Her mother and father were both in the water business, so if you got any water questions, Jeannie will certainly be able to help answer them if I can. So Fairfax Water was created in 1957. Why? This is a map, 1957. There were 26 water utilities in Fairfax County. And they were totally uncoordinated, and different pricing, different water availability. And the county knew, in order to grow, it needed to do something to create a unified water system. So Fairfax Water was created by the board of supervisors to establish, operate, and maintain a comprehensive countywide water system, to be accomplished through the acquisition of existing systems and the construction of new facilities. And that's what we've been doing for the last 56 years. So, who are we? We're the largest drinking water utility-
Chuck, I got a request. Would you put this way when you talk?
Sure.
When you're talking up that way, I can't hear you.
Sorry. Largest utility in Virginia, drinking water utility, one in five Virginians, about 1.7 million people in Northern Virginia. We serve not only Fairfax County retail, but we provide wholesale service to Prince William County, Loudon County, Fort Belvoir, Dulles Airport, city of Alexandria, town of Yount, town of Hernan. We are public, we are nonprofit, we're an authority created under the Virginia Water and Waste Authorities Act of 1957. We have two treatment plants currently, one on the Potomac River, one on the Oquahquan River, and we have, we talked about that, we have facilities scattered about the county. Don't need to get into this in a great detail, but we have this treatment plant on Potomac and on the Oquahquan, and service depots in the north and in the south of the county. And you can see that green area is the whole service area, including the wholesale customers. You can see the breadth of the distribution system here. Our main offices are in Merrifield, just up the road, on Prosperity, and Executive Park and Adams. That's our Corvus plant, which treats water from the Potomac River. That's the Griffith plant, which you've probably driven by. If you drive down 123, just before you go, there's a bridge on the Oquahquan. If you look to your right, you'll see this. This is our Newington maintenance facility, just off I-95. This is Chantilly's maintenance facility, just off Route 50. And just want to talk a little bit about that. So, why I talked about 54 employees, I believe, that will become Fairfax Water employees on January 3rd, if the referendum is approved. We are very much excited about bringing these employees into our Fairfax Water family. We've met with these employees individually.
I'm going to guarantee this to you, since we're doing it anyway.
Oh, we are.
Improved audio. We've been getting audio, but I think this will make it.
Okay. So we've met individually with each of these employees, we've told them exactly what they're going to be doing, where they're going to be reporting, what their salary's going to be, how we're going to transfer their retirement benefits, and how we're going to provide them comparable paying benefits. We've already started working these people into our training programs, and as I said, we're looking forward to bringing them into our family of employees with the referendum is approved. You've already talked, seen the rate reduction, rate equalization benefits. Water utilities are all very capital intensive. We have a CIP, a capital improvements program, over $600 million for over 10 years. The city had a capital improvement program for its water utility, I'm sure it was close to $100 million over that period. And there are going to be economies of scale that we can harvest with the merger of these two systems. And we think they're going to be significant. We've done a cursory look at the CIP, and believe that we can harvest somewhere in a neighborhood of $50 million in capital savings with the merger of the systems. And then we add a third source of supply to Northern Virginia. And we already spoke about our two plants. Bringing the Washington Aqueduct into that source of supply will provide resiliency and redundancy that would be the envy of the water utility business, having three sources of supplies. So we're looking forward to providing that benefit to Northern Virginia. I was going to mention just briefly that, this is a map of the Potomac watershed. The reason I put it up there is that there are a number of reservoirs upstream that are coordinated regionally. And we share three rivers in the Washington metropolitan area, the Potomac, the Tuxent, and the Oquahquan. And the three major water utilities cooperate on the construction and operation and maintenance of upstream water reservoirs. They're used to augment supply during drought, and Falls Church has been participating in that whole process and the funding of that through the Washington Aqueduct. But they're important resources, and it's the way the entire metro region cooperates in a way that allows us to maximize the efficiency of the use of those resources, and again, achieving some economies through that. If the referendum is approved, we're going to get to work real quick, trying to get customer information out. Jeannie is already working on what we would put together for a package for all the new customers. We want this transition to be as seamless as possible. The employees will continue to work out of Gordon Road Depot for a period of time. We'll lease that facility from the city. We want to make sure that there's a nice, smooth transition, and so we tend to, basically on day one, to operate as they're operating today. Fairfax Water does provide a very high level of service. I will be demanding a high level of service, as much as I will finally become a customer of my own organization. And I think that we can prove, prove out to be the case with time. And the agreement does allow us to provide a place for bill payment right here at City Hall. So, we did get a question as we finished meeting, it was about direct debit. So, we put this in here, direct debit will transfer. Customers will likely be asked if they want to continue with that, but they can opt out if they choose to. So, that's a brief overview of Fairfax Water, but I know you have questions regarding the agreement, and I want to turn it back over to Wyatt.
So, we did go through these slides a little bit quicker than we have in our prior town hall meetings, so let's take time now for questions that you might have.
I got several questions. I don't want to monopolize.
Start.
Okay. Why was sewer system not included in this?
The sewer system, as you recall, the city went through a process of considering selling the water system through an auction process, prior to the negotiations with Fairfax Water. And through our evaluation process, we determined, A, that the sewer system was, reduced the value of the overall transaction.
What did we reduce of that?
It did, it would have the effect of reducing the value of the transaction, or the proceeds to the city. And two, we believe that from an operating perspective, it has synergies with a lot of the things that we do in public works. And so, when you operate a small city on our scale, having, maintaining a scale of operations is important. And so the synergies with our stormwater function, with our streets maintenance, a lot of the same staff do that type of work, and we believed it would allow us to do all of those areas of public works more cost-effectively if we retain the sewer.
Okay. I got some more. $26 million in developer fees, is that also designated for maintenance of the sewer system as well as the water system?
Yeah, that's strictly for the water.
Okay. So, in terms of the maintenance of the sewer system, what are we looking at?
Well, the sewer system does have, you know, sewer systems, like any other utility, will have maintenance costs. Those are supported both by developer fees and by the commodity charge that we charge on the sewer side. But that's, the sewer's in a completely different enterprise fund than the water fund.
I thought you just said that developer fees also maintain the sewer?
No. I said the opposite.
Oh, I misunderstood.
Yeah.
So, and so the idea of the stormwater is to be coordinated with sewer maintenance? Is that the idea?
Yeah, and that's, in terms of the engineering support, it's the same people who do that work, the people who do the operations, who maintain it, same skill set. And they'll be the same employees.
I saw 40 million, I saw 30 million, and I subtracted it, I got 10, but then I got a net of 3. What happened to the other $7 million?
No. So we have a net of 10, so that's one number, those are the net proceeds. In addition to that 10, the city will keep cash, not to exceed $3 million. So really, it's a net of 13, is a way of looking at it. After all the bills are paid, if there is cash left over after bills are paid, then we would have a net of 13 million.
Okay, so the bottom line is 10, but we may have an additional 3.
That's correct.
Okay, and so is there a designated purpose for that 10?
We will go through with the city council on a discussion after the referendum about the use of the proceeds, but that has, there are good ideas on the use of the proceeds, but an official policy on the use of the proceeds would occur after the referendum.
Well, could that be used by computers in school, or would it be designated maybe for the storm system? In other words, is that just going to a general fund, or is that designated specifically for the water sewer aspect of things?
It is, it will go into the general fund, so it can be used for any purpose, and the city council, working with the community to evaluate priorities, will lay out what those purposes would be.
Okay. The rate is going to be coordinated within two years. After the two years, do we still have more or less of an agreement or warranty or guarantee that Fairfax County will not up the rate to city users?
Yes. And so that's what the uniform rate provision provides for. They, we will not have a rate differential for the city.
Now, I got 38.48, they got 36, and I got 2.4. Are they acres?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Now, some of that property, it sounds like it's going to be transferred to the city, but the city already owns it. Did I misunderstand that?
The city owns the property, but it's not located in the boundaries, the political boundaries of the city. And so why that's important for the schools in particular, when they go to get their building permits or to do their planning- building permits or to do their planning, right now they have to go to Fairfax County to get those permissions. They are right now capped at their FAR zoning limits. They cannot get a bigger school on that site without the county board's legislative permission. That will end with it becoming in the city. But I think in addition, and possibly more important than that, is that with the possibility of economic development, that economic development would pay taxes to the city of Falls Church as opposed to paying taxes to Fairfax County.
Now, of the 36 acres, it looked like it was pretty much on the school site.
Yes.
How much of that, did I hear like nine acres? See, I'm a little confused. How much of that is going to be like the redevelopment of the schools, and then how much would be left over available for development, non-school development?
If you take the strict 30/70 ratio, you've got about 11 acres that would be available for economic development.
And that would be part of that area around the school?
We would determine where the best place for that would be.
No, but that would be the property that then becomes part of Falls Church City?
No, all of it is part of the city, the whole school site.
Oh, okay, okay.
But, but, so the city will do its land use planning, determine what is the best place to locate future economic development.
But if 70% had to be used for school purposes, right?
Correct.
So what's the math? So 70% times the 38.4 or times the 36?
Times 36.
Okay. So what's that come to?
It's about 11 for economic development and the remainder for school uses.
And then what, is that adequate for the school use?
That is what we'll go through the school planning purposes for. Now, the schools have for a long time determined that their sprawling, spread-out, single-story high school would be more efficient if it were a multi-story high school taking up a smaller footprint. That's not a new idea. So we'll go through a more specific planning to determine what, you know, what's the space that we need to have a good high school campus?
And that's high school plus middle school?
Yeah. And, and in that, we'll also have a very keen eye for knowing that the economic development will be very important in terms of the future financing of a school. A school is a very expensive proposition. And so the economic development portion of that is a key part of feasibility of building a new high school.
Okay. One last question. Fairfax gets Potomac and Ocaquon, but we get Washington Aqueduct. Does it water from the Washington, does that come from the Potomac?
That's a good question.
So what's the?
Different place.
Different place.
Different treatment facility.
That's it.
And a third, a third source. So if one of the other two plants were being knocked offline for any reason, there would be a third.
Okay. So it's water treatment plant. That's the one on the Maryland side of the river?
Yeah, Dale Carlia.
Yeah.
And also in DC.
So we get our water from the DC side of the river, it's probably on the boundary between DC and Maryland.
Well, that's what you want.
Yeah.
In terms of the, see, I'm not, I know we got a problem with storm sewer. Do we have an adequate sewer system?
We have a sewer system that will need uptake, upgrade, you know, maintenance over, in the future. But it's been planned out in the CIP. I don't think we have any big surprises on the sewer side. We've already absorbed what I think are probably the biggest new expenses on the sewer side, which is at the treatment plant, where our treatment plants are coming into compliance with the Chesapeake Bay regulations that are mandated by the EPA.
I'm not.
And so, but so hundreds of millions of dollars have been invested in those plants. Those have already been paid for and are built into our sewer rates today, and that's really the heavy lift on the sewer side.
So the sewer side, it's more on the treatment than the actual pipes that?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. It's a gravity system. It does need to be maintained, but it's, you know, it's not a real complex maintenance
Why, you said that about $30 million is reserved for paying off bonds and pension costs, residual pension costs. How will that money be safeguarded for those purposes?
The, two ways. For the bonds, we have approximately $20 million of debt in the water fund, so to pay that principal plus interest, we'll put enough money aside in an escrow account that is really a lockbox that will guarantee that those investors of those bonds will be paid off. So that, so that bond remains fully secured and outside really, you know, through a legal arrangement. It can't be accessed. Then the other, for the pension, it will be placed into the pension fund based on what our actuaries say we need to fully fund our future pension obligations. That money can't be taken out of the pension fund. One additional important point about the pension is that for all current employees, their pension is going to be portable with them and go to Fairfax Water. And with them will go a one-time payment from the city's pension fund that will go with them. And then in the future, all future benefit payments and liabilities for that pension obligation will be handled by Fairfax Water. And so it's really our employees who are already retired that we want to set aside funds on an actuarial basis so that that obligation is fully met, so that the taxpayers are not faced with that liability, you know, three years from now or five years from now. Mr. Taylor?
All right, just to clarify a point regarding the debt. The type of debt that we borrowed does not allow us to prepay.
Yeah, I realize that. I heard, I heard that at a previous section.
Who will maintain, or who will conduct then the maintenance of our water system and the hydrants and the pipes? And is it, is it the water company or Fairfax County?
Fairfax Water will do that. And that's all encompassed in our fee structure.
And are pipes in good shape, bad shape?
The pipes are, and the oldest part of the system is actually in the city limits. That's where the water system began in the 1920s and where some of our oldest infrastructure is. But throughout our system, I believe we have a well-maintained water system. Our tanks are very well-maintained, our pump stations are well-maintained. And so I believe we're returning over to Fairfax Water, a water utility that's had a steady level of capital investment in it.
So they're not going to be coming and tearing up the streets anytime soon?
Well, as, you know, we were planning to tear up the streets in some significant ways. We were planning to-
Well, that's my question. I mean, it doesn't matter who does it. Is that something?
One of the things that will come out of this is that we both were making, planning massive capital improvements to meet the growth in Tyson's Corner. We have in our CIP a Kirby Road water main replacement project that was going to expand all of our water mains through Kirby Road to get water west to Tyson's. It is a very expensive project. Now, Fairfax Water's going to, you know, that may be the way they decide to get water to Tyson's. They may configure different ways to get water to Tyson's. I think we can guarantee that it will be, from the large public's perspective, a more capital-efficient approach than the two of us trying to attack the problem from two different sides.
What he said.
What unintended consequences might you, did you anticipate?
I'm sorry, say it again.
What unintended consequences might you anticipate?
My definition.
My definition. Who knows? But that's, it's always unintended consequences on everything.
We've had a good long time to do due diligence on this, and I want to commend Wyatt and all of his staff and the cooperation we've gotten in conducting that due diligence. I think we know exactly what we're getting into. I think we're bringing the people into our organization that know how to deal with it, have been dealing with it. And I don't anticipate any disasters here. I think it's going to be a smooth transition, I really do.
The relationship of Fairfax County to the water authority, could you speak to that a little bit?
Fairfax County. Fairfax County with supervisors created us, and they each supervise, appoints a member of us. That's our relationship. They approve our CIP, no, approve, they approve a CIP which includes our CIP, but they don't approve our operating.
Wyatt, I just wanted to reinforce the point about Tyson's Corner. I'm involved in a couple of projects up there, so I've been working on it for a very long time. There are not going to be millions of new square feet built up there, but in fact, tens of millions over a 20, 30, 40-year period. Water is pretty essential. Tyson's Corner is kind of mostly on a hill. It's a really, really inconvenient place to get a lot of water. And that's why, as I mentioned, consolidating the two into one operation instead of trying to take it from this direction and that direction. It comes from one direction, however Fairfax decides to do it, and will save the rate payers, those of us who buy water, a lot of money, I mean, many, many millions of dollars.
Very well said. Are you a water guy?
I'm a developer guy. I'm the guy who pays all those damn fees up front.
I think that's, and Tyson's is a challenge because of the elevation. It's been a challenge for the city for many years, and from our perspective, that's where I like it.
The damn tape up there is brand new.
A lot, that's where a lot of the capital saves come from. Because from our system, the Corvus system, it's not a challenge to get water to Tyson's. We've got a lot of water going right through Tyson's.
Why would anybody not vote for this?
We're here to provide information.
I could tell you why.
Not to advocate one way or the other.
Yeah, I know, but-
But so in terms of, you know, fair question, you know, I can let maybe others try to tackle the question of why they should or they shouldn't. I'm here to try to provide as much information to help inform the voters as possible.
Sandy, I could tell you why. See, I've done some canvassing in my neighborhood.
Okay.
And some people say, well, we're giving this water, where are we getting? A lot of people just don't know. And people maybe, see, what I've done in my neighborhood is canvass the people who moved in, moved in the last year or so.
Uh-huh.
And they don't know anything about anything. They don't know that for the last five years they've had losses going back. They don't know the history.
Yeah, yeah.
And so I would be happy to share some of this material that Wyatt gave me if you want to pass out to some of your neighbors here. But people just don't know, and maybe we'll get 20% of the people who are registered to vote showing up. We want to get that 1% more who vote for it, okay? So people are ignorant. They don't know, they got busy lives, maybe show up to vote, maybe they don't. If it rains that day, who knows?
Yep, okay. You're right.
We should have 50 to 60% turnout.
We'll find out.
You have a very popular figure on the ballot.
No, it's very-
Read your hand together.
So if you have two maintenance facilities, would you contemplate a third one with the expanded water system and the geographic location of your existing versus the new territory?
Absolutely.
Kind of already kicking that around?
Yes. You know, we're going to use Gordon Road for a while. The agreement says we can use it for up to 10 years, but we're definitely looking at what our options are.
Is it that solely owned by the water city?
Yes. Gordon Road is.
The city or the property?
Both.
Okay.
It's the old Deal Lumber site. It's the old Deal Lumber site?
Yes, yes, I know, right, right.
And that's where the water authority operates right then and does their maintenance and stores meters and stuff like that.
Yeah, do those meters still work that they put in a couple of years ago? Would use those?
With the which meters?
Those water meter things that they put in.
Remote read.
Yeah, the remote reads.
Yeah, they're very, they're very effective. And, and so our, you know, our customer service folks drive down the street and it beams in the signal, and they collect them.
But you'll still use those same meters?
A way to continue to be charged minimum fee, people like being unused to water, and we always get charged a minimum fee. Is that going to be the case with water?
Well, the rate structure for commodity rate won't change on day one, but eventually it'll become our rate structure. We don't have a, we have a account fee, a service charge, if you will, around nine bucks. But beyond that, it's commodity rate.
Do we still pay a foster's tax?
Uh, yes. Fairfax Water will collect that tax for us and remit that to us. And that's 8% on the water bill. And that's a consumer utility tax that we've had on the books for a very long period of time, and it remains important for city operations. Do you have a question in the back? Mr. Barrett?
Yeah, I wanted to ask you a couple of questions about some numbers you used. What's the, what was the decision to guarantee employees three years? Why not five or 10? And on the, where did the 70, 30% come up at the high school? Where did those numbers come from?
Well, three years, I think, is struck, we have an employee task force that worked with management through the auction process, really through the beginnings of this discussion about the future of the water utility. And so we ran a lot of the issues through this employee task force on benefits, on compensation, et cetera. And the three-year proposal was one that we did not believe we would be able to get for employees early on when we were talking about an investor-owned utility auction, because the investor-owned community just, that was beyond the pale. With a public agency that has a similar ethos and culture of a public agency from the city of Falls Church, three years seemed to our employee task force to be a reasonable provision. And in discussing with Fairfax Water, they found it to be reasonable as well. So there, that was not an issue, I don't think, that we struggled over internally. I can convey that. In terms of the 70/30, the boundary adjustment was a, was a major point of negotiation throughout this transaction. It was something that we frankly fought very hard for, the county was very resistant to. And the 70/30 was a compromise that we arrived at that the judge, I think, was very instrumental in sort of breaking things down and laying out a way of framing it that all sides could accept. And-
Well, no, I'm asking, why was it an issue at all if they're giving us the property?
Ah, why was it an issue for the county? The county's concern was losing land use control over that part of the county. And, you know, that is-
Quite tax revenue.
No, no, that's not the issue. They're turning it over.
And so they were concerned about, in terms of adjacent property owners who were county voters.
There isn't anybody adjacent.
Well-
Across four lanes of highway?
At any rate, it was, it was a negotiated, it was a negotiated settlement. And it wasn't worth it.
Did you, I'm setting the three years. Was there consultation with the employees?
Consultation?
Yeah.
As I indicated, we worked through that issue among others with employee task force.
So employees were included in that or was just HR?
No, that was, employees were on the employee task force. It was composed of about 14 employees from the water utility who were there to sort of work through in detailed ways the issues that would affect them in terms of how they would get through a transition. And we believed, and I believe Fairfax Water has believed through this transition, that that was critical to the success ultimately of transition, is listening to what employees had on their minds and responding to them to make the transition work for employees.
What will happen if the referendum doesn't favor the water system? Where are we at that point?
Well-
In the wilderness.
I will say that the organization is, is working very hard and has put just a tremendous amount of effort in the planning of executing this transition. So if the referendum does fail, just from a management perspective, it will be a huge shift of perspective, and we'll need to, you know, work through- shift of perspective and we'll need to, you know, work through that. You know, in terms of the overall disposition of this, we worked for many years to, with the city council, trying to find a resolution of issues that we've been working through with Fairfax County and with Fairfax Water. I believe we found a resolution that is, that is fair for all sides. Concerned, a reason that I recommended this to the city council publicly, and when the public and the city council voted in favor of this agreement, I believe was a view that it was a fair agreement. And so if it doesn't, if it's not approved, then we will remain in the water business. We will have the cloud of various forms of litigation that will still be outstanding and unresolved. And those, I think, carry significant liabilities for all the municipalities that operate water systems in the county.
So they go away if the sale goes through?
Yeah, this agreement resolves all of the litigation. And so litigation right now has stayed and if upon closing of the agreement, execution of the agreement, the litigation is dismissed.
And does it have to win by a certain number of votes or?
The yeses must outnumber the nos by at least one vote.
I'm real out of the stuff that my office has.
Mr. Snyder?
Yeah, Wyatt, maybe it came up when I was out of the room, the homeless shelter, did that issue come up?
It did not.
It might be important to mention that tonight about what's been resolved there. And then one other point I wanted to make about the prospect now of opening up some significant discussions with Fairfax County on joint development and other things as a result of resolving this very contentious matter. And I've reason to believe that that improves dramatically if there's a yes vote. But in any event, focus on the homeless shelter for a minute, if you would, because I know a lot of citizens are concerned about that.
The city provides space for the friends of the Falls Church homeless shelter to operate a hypothermia shelter from December 1st through May 31st each year at the property yard. And it's in the area that would lease Fairfax Water. It's the second story of that facility. And so what we have, are working with Fairfax Water on is just excluding that part of the warehouse from the lease. So that second story will be out of the lease, it will maintain that relationship between the friends and the city, and Fairfax Water will operate its operations. We'll keep them independent of each other so the two uses won't mix for sake of reasons, and we believe it will be sustained there.
So you have a legal team here, I've got a little sort of a wonky question because I'm a real estate attorney. What documents are going to get recorded to move the Gordon's Road properties that are, I assume, recorded, the landmarks of Fairfax County and they're deeded to the City of Falls Church? What's the mechanism for just moving those deeds that you have had all over the Arlington County side? Because you guys record your landmarks with Arlington, right? Is it just a deed? You guys do a deed in a quick lane or stump the attorney panel?
Yeah. Let me introduce John Foster, who's the city attorney, who has been instrumental through all of these, through all this body of work.
In just a couple of sentences, what will be recorded in the land records, it will be a court order that basically affirms the validity of the boundary adjustment and the action taken by the city council of Falls Church as well as the Fairfax County Board of Supervisors to approve the boundary adjustment. So that's what will be recorded in the land.
So the lots going to retain there, I mean, so it'll just be, okay.
The lots are not going to change in that regard.
And so both counties, the court order will be recorded, both in Fairfax and Arlington, so anybody doing a title search would notice, switch over and go to the other court now for the rest of it. All right, fair enough.
Could I ask something while John is still up?
Sure.
I, I participate in a lot of negotiations as a federal mediator, and I'm always curious about the dynamics of it. And one thing that I've found in my experiences, particularly when there's, like in the labor management thing, there's a continuing relationship, and there is between the city and the county as well. And during these negotiations that I've observed just through the press and conversations with people, there's been a lot of kind of ugly things done, and I would say probably on both sides, but I have been, I'm biased on that, so I've been watching the ones that himself has been doing and his crowd. So I just wondered, at any point, in negotiations I've been involved in where the parties are going to live together afterwards, it's really appropriate at some point for people to say something honest about the tactics they've used and that they've seen the other side use. Has anything like that been, has anything like that happened because we are going to, you know, live with that same border? It might be a good idea. In fact, I'll just, I'll just tell you that, because I just admitted it to Tom a little while ago, I sent a suggestion to Sharon Boliva that, because she's a, I don't know if you've met her, she's really, I saw her give a speech to the community college graduation and she's a very compassionate person that came across to me. So I suggested to her that she might be one that could say something like that because they'd been in on some of the rough tactics as well, the county council. So during negotiations, anybody whisper that out loud that now that it's over with, we've gone through mediation, we maybe shouldn't have done that, we, I wish you hadn't done that? Just on clearing of the air about, in the passion of the dispute, a lot of tactics were used, a lot of things were said probably that were regrettable in terms of a continuing relationship. You know, what I can say, having been through, you know, several rounds of negotiations with Fairfax County and Fairfax Water, is that in those negotiations, there was, by all sides, real respect for the other side's, the other side's views. And that mutual respect, I think, played a large part in getting us to the point where we, you know, had a outline of terms that we concluded that were in the best interest of the city and why we recommended that the, you know, the city council adopted and send it out to the voters for referendum approval, Gary. You know, I think that it was a recognition by all sides that the path we were on, which was constant litigation, was not in anybody's interests. And that's how we got where we were. Was there an express apology by any side? The answer to that question is no. But I will say, you know, having, again, been through weeks of negotiations that led up to Judge Buchanan's involvement in November of 2012, the way that parties conducted themselves in those negotiations, quite frankly, put, you know, our current federal Congress to shame in the way that, you know, contrasting the way they've acted over the past 16 days with the way that the party's representatives acted in these negotiations. It was very mature, it was professional, and it was really focused on, okay, here's what our key interests are, here's what your key interests are, let's see if we can get to a point where we have a mutually beneficial solution, and we got to that point.
But you're really talking about after we were, after the city was beaten into the crown by the bully?
Well, I disagree with that. I disagree with that, I really do. And the reason I do is that, you know, the-
Well, it's because we're all trying to have smiley faces now, but I'm-
No, I just, I personally, I disagree with that. As the, as the city attorney who's been here for now almost six years, there was a lot of back and forth. And what gets lost in the media shuffle is that there were several points where Fairfax County and where Fairfax Water was on the downside and got a bad result. For example, okay, I'll just walk you through some. We were sued, the city was sued for about $7 million in anti, for antitrust violations, trebled to $21 million for punitive damages. Do you know how much Fairfax Water recovered on that? Do you know how much? Zero. They got zero on that, Gary, because we did. The outside counsel, Firma Reed Smith, did a great job in beating that back. Okay, that's number one. We were then sued in late 2010 and early 2011 for water reclaims, okay, by Fairfax County. Fairfax Water did not participate in that litigation, that was Fairfax County property. How much was recovered on that? Zero. Okay? So, you know, that's what led up to, in late 2012, this negotiated solution. And I think that, quite frankly, what played a part in that was a realization by all the parties that there was no guaranteed victory in the litigation that was pending, that there was potential downside. And I think part of that, the calculation, you know, my sense is, the calculation that the parties went through was that, you know, we may lose on this. And that's what, and I'm talking about, quite honestly, Fairfax County and Fairfax Water with this rate regulation ordinance, and that led them to reach a negotiated solution with us. So, anyway, that's where I am. I take, you know, personal pride in that. We've been in constant, really constant warfare, and I feel like we've got a negotiated package that, and again, I'm speaking as an individual, not in my official capacity, but I think we've got a negotiated package that is clearly in the best interest of the city, and that's why I recommended that the city council go ahead and approve it.
And I agree with everything that John said, and would say also, just from a personal perspective, if I were asked to apologize, I believe everything I did was appropriate and looking out for the interests of the city. And throughout it all, I maintained a professional relationship with all of my colleagues in the county and Fairfax Water. We conducted business on many fronts throughout this, and at the end of the day, we have a resolution that I believe is respectful of the needs of the three parties. I think it's also a good deal for the city. It's within the bounds of what SAIC would say, would be able to certify as a fair market transaction. And resolves issues for the county and for Fairfax Water as well. So at any rate, you've asked that question twice in a public forum, I hope we've answered it and others may want to answer it as well, but I believe we're on sound footing and have been able to maintain effective relations throughout the past five years, even as we had very serious and significant differences on policy and in looking out for our interests. But I think we're very well positioned now to work well into the future as well.
I wonder if I could ask Chuck, now that we're on first-name basis, could I ask you a question? Twenty-six water departments in the county in the 1950s? What took you so long to get to us when your mission was to eliminate all of them?
Oh, that's a, that's a-
Best to last, right?
Not a simple answer. Yeah, there were three left. Falls Church, Fairfax City, and, yeah. And we had, we've been in discussions with all three of these for decades, decades. And all three are different. They all have different issues, different, different issues that had to be worked through. And they're all sovereign. They're not private water utilities, which could be purchased or condemned if you could not purchase. So it had to be a negotiated solution. And, you know, as Wyatt and John said, these negotiations, despite what you've read, were amicable and respectful. You know, the bully narrative sells in newspapers. It bears no resemblance to the reality of the negotiations. Everybody was working to represent the interests of their respective stakeholders and it took time. But, believe me, we've been talking since 1957. The reason Fairfax Water created in 1957 was to solve this issue.
So what is Fairfax City-Vienna status as compared to ours?
Fairfax City, we will settle on the same day, January 3rd. The town of Vienna is a wholesale customer and will remain a wholesale customer for now.
And in the future, in terms of relating, you know, furthering our relationship with Fairfax County, again, I would, you know, could point to dozens of things we did very effectively with Fairfax County over the last six years, but I think Vice Mayor Snyder very accurately states that, you know, the future, I think, is bright for the relationship. And-
Just very quickly, I probably have the opportunity to deal with other regional leaders more than anyone else, and this has been a difficult period. We did agree and work together on essentials, but in terms of joint development, for example, it really wasn't going to happen. So I'm hopeful that one of the dividends of this will be opening up some opportunities for joint activities, development and other things along the Route 29 corridor and elsewhere that just simply wasn't going to happen. And as a result, frankly, Jerry, of the kind of dispute resolution that you've made your life engaged in, and frankly, the Congress should have done much the same kind of thing. But mediation is what did it. I'm very grateful we decided to do it, and I'm looking forward to not only resolving these issues in a satisfactory way and hopefully the voters, again, speaking as an individual, the voters will support it, but that it offers opportunities at this point that you can't put a dollar sign on. Thanks.
All right. Well, thank you all for coming. If there aren't any more questions, we'll be here as we're, as we're packing up and feel free to answer and ask any other questions. But thank you for being here.